All right, it's 6:01. Before the meeting begins, I'd like to remind the public to please silence your cell phones and note that this meeting is being recorded. If you'd please stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll take, the first thing on our agenda is the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational High School. Good evening.
Thank you. So if it will, the committee, we can actually start our introduction and give Jay time. And as we all know, there's a little bit of a basketball game on tonight, so I'm sure everyone's trying to get home. I would like to say Deb Davis, who is the committee rep for Woburn at Northeast Regional. This is the first meeting she's missed in, I think, over 20 years, and it's for, I think, a pretty good reason. She actually works at the Garden, and she's required to work game one tonight, so I don't know. I feel too sorry for her, though, right now. So I'll begin. Again, I'm Dave DeBarry, I'm the superintendent here at Northeast. I've been coming to these meetings in a different capacity for about 15 years prior to this as principal. I think one of these years, I'm going to just pop in on a random fall meeting and say hi to everybody, so it doesn't look like a Groundhog Day situation for me.
Senator DeBarry, can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yeah.
Jay, if you want to hook up an HDMI cord, I have one here.
No, it's okay.
It just doesn't, I don't think it carries all the way over here, but it can move over here, I think, what we all said.
No, no worries, no worries. So before I do a couple introductions here, I would like to say that this year's a little different. We usually come in here very proud of the numbers that we set as a goal. However, you may have heard from the Woburn School Department and from every other school department, I think, in Massachusetts, that the state played a little shell game on us this year and worked to put more of the onus on the individual cities and towns and increased a lot of our required school spending. And as I said, it's impacting, I'd say, every district in Massachusetts, as well as Northeast, and I'm sure that Woburn's been affected. However, we did keep it as low as what we were legally allowed to keep it. So we still did our best to keep it low, but the state wanted to shift more of the onus onto the communities and away from the state. And that's an unfortunate situation. A few of the groups that I work with, MAVA and some of the, you know, M-A-S-S, are really working to correct this so it doesn't happen again in future years, because we know the challenges and the impacts it's going to have on communities like Woburn. So with that said, we have Jay Pacoan, he's our finance director. Jay's been here with me a couple years. And I have a special introduction, and it may not be an introduction. It's a Woburn native, Woburn High School graduate, who is now the Assistant Superintendent of Northeast Metropolitan Regional, Tracy O'Brien. I promised I wouldn't say what year she graduated from. So this year, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Tracy, since she has home court advantage here. And I'll be here with Jay with any questions.
Great. Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. I am a Woburn High graduate. I've been at Northeast for 16 years, but this is a new role for me this year. So I just wanted to give you a very quick update on the Woburn students at Northeast. We do have 122 Woburn students at Northeast currently. Our seniors are graduating tomorrow night. We have our application, applications to Northeast have risen exponentially over the past 10 years. This year, we've received well over 1,200 applications. Thankfully, our new building project is well underway to help with that expanding enrollment. Our foundations are almost complete and still is set to arrive to the building site in July. So that building is set to be completed in spring of 2026. And I'm happy to report that Northeast was able to receive increased MSBA reimbursement after our approval, which is relatively unheard of. Northeast superintendent and team were able to advocate for legislation that increased funding for building projects that were approved during COVID because of the escalating costs post-COVID for those projects, which ultimately allowed for $23 million of returned money to the cities and towns to reduce their cost towards the project. And additionally, we've secured $7 million in capital skills grants that will be used towards the, are being used towards the purchase of equipment for the new building, all to lower the cost of the project for the cities and towns. So our Woburn students have participated in state career technical competitions at Skills USA across the state, DECA competitions, they've gone all the way out to California for the national competition. Our students from Woburn have gone across our cities and towns, participating in our community-based projects. They've done work here in Woburn. We had a wonderful ceremony that took place last week at the Joyce, where a podium was donated that our students built that was beautiful. So we have met with the Boys and Girls Club, where they will be working to build a shed that they are in need of for next school year. So we appreciate your partnership here in Woburn, and we appreciate all of you. So, Jay?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jay Pacoan. I'm the Director of Finance for Northeast Metro Tech. I've been the finance director for the past nine years. I'm just going to talk to you a little bit about how we develop our budgets and go through the budget process on an annual basis. So first and foremost, our main goal in all of our budgets that we produce annually, we want to minimize the financial impact to our member communities. You know, we understand our financial, our communities are under financial constraints, significant financial constraints. They're under the restriction of Prop 2.5, how much money they can raise via taxation on an annual basis. We also understand that they need to fund their, cities and towns need to fund their departments fully and adequately, such as their regular school departments, their police and fire, DPW departments. So we're very cognizant when it comes to developing our budgets. We want, we don't want to place an undue burden on the city. And secondly, we want to provide an adequate level of funding to support student learning and foster educational excellence, because ultimately, that's what we're here to do, is here to be Woburn's other school. We want to offer that excellent vocational pathway that Woburn citizens are proud to send their kids to. So regionalization exists by definition to offer services at a reduced cost to its member communities. So we always try to keep our assessment at or below a 3% increase. And as the superintendent just spoke to, there are certain reasons why we were unable to come in at that benchmark. And I'll get into those later in the presentation. So we face a challenging predicament this year. As you all know, and I'm sure the city is aware of, there was a very, very decreased amount of Chapter 70 money based on factors that typically bring in a lot more money. For instance, looking at Woburn's numbers, it looks like you increased by over 150 students or, almost 150 students. Typically, that would increase that Chapter 70 number by a significant margin, well over $1 million. Similarly, Northeast had a 51 student increase. And based on that number and based on the fact that the SOA, which is the Student Opportunity Act, is supposed to infuse money into the Chapter 70 formula, we anticipated a lot more than we received. We projected around $2.2 million in Chapter 70 funding. When we actually received the state funding numbers, it was closer to 1, 1 million. And similarly, there were other metrics that increased, such as required net school spending. Now, required net school spending is the amount of money that schools are required to spend on school activities and supports for children. And then also, we have the required minimum contribution, which is how much money each city and town is required to chip in in order to meet that requirement. So those are the two parts of the equation, you get required net school spending and you have required minimum contribution. Typically, that gap is filled by state funding. As I mentioned, state funding, we thought it was coming in around $2.2 million. A lot of people did. And that's why we typically wait for those numbers to come in from the state, because we never, never know. Those numbers came in at $1.1 million. So in our case, we have a $2 million, $2.1 million net school spending increase. That $1.1 million is offsetting what needs to be passed on to each city and town. And that basically resulted in a $980,000 increase to our member communities, which unfortunately, there's nothing we can do to offset that increase. That's required minimum. That's something that's set by the state. And we do as much as we can to reduce that, but unfortunately, that's not something that's able to be, able to happen. And there was another piece of the equation, but this was the known piece. We're entering into our third year of our building project. The first year, our bonding was $30 million. We're borrowing an additional tranche of bonds in FY '25. Actually, we just closed on that. The interest and principal payment is due in FY '25. We've been talking about it for about seven years, so it was, it was known that this payment, FY '25 and FY '26 is the highest portion of the debt service that will be owed. And because of that, the debt service payment is, also increases in FY '25. So it was kind of like a perfect storm of cost. And this is what I just mentioned. We borrowed $30 million at the very beginning of '22, '23. We were able actually to borrow at a lower rate than anticipated, which saved the cities and towns some money. In May, we borrowed $60 million. We were able to achieve a great rate, 4.07%. Given the interest rate environment, we still think that is a considerable win. But due to that $60 million increase, that obviously increases the debt service payment for FY '25. So if you look at the total assessment increase and the total minimum contribution increase plus our debt service increase, it tells the full story of the increase in the assessment. And I want to preface this by saying that that is, that's the total assessment increase and not to Woburn. I will get to that piece later on, so I just want you to, everybody to be aware of that. So as I mentioned, we always try to keep our assessments low, and this is a historical representation of that claim. We show that FY '19 through FY '22, we try to keep it as low as possible for the member communities due to the fact, again, we don't want to place any additional financial burden. The two outliers you see there in FY '23 and FY '25 are due to the debt service payment mainly. And this is the historical assessment analysis from FY '18 to FY '25. Again, the two outliers, FY '23 and FY '25, are higher because of the debt service. So as you can see, our state funding has been upticking slightly, again, but not by inflationary, inflationary measures. Last year, for example, the inflation factor that was used by the state was around 4%. This year, for no reason whatsoever, it was 1.039%. It's really not in line with the true inflationary factor, so I feel like if that was adjusted, and they are, they are having committees to take a look at that formula, hopefully.
If I could just jump in, I think everybody here knows when you go food shopping that the inflation is not a little over 1%. So this is, goes back to the shell game that we're seeing at the state leadership level.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
So we did receive additional amount of revenue. We did receive, like I said, $1.192 million in Chapter 70 money that we will use to reduce the member community's assessment. We also, because we're a regional, we received $1.3 million in transportation reimbursement. We get reimbursed for our transportations, close to around 80% of reimbursement of total costs. Additionally, we intend to use $400,000 from our E&amp;D funds to further reduce assessment costs. In total, we plan to use around $1.7 million of our other funds to reduce the member assessments and burden. So in FY '25, we have the following fiscal challenges. We need funding for regular contractual salary obligations, including our steps in lanes, funding for new educator administrators based on student needs, an increase in enrollment in key subjects, increased demand stemming from school building project. We need to add funding for a new transportation contract. The last time we negotiated our transportation contract was pre-COVID. And as you know, those costs have increased significantly since then. And then funding for new technology positions to support student learning. So all told, with the debt service increase, our total budget is increasing $5,432,667. That's a 16% increase, but I will say, without the debt service, it's around 6%. But again, we wish it could have been lower, but again, we're tied to the required minimum local contribution that needs to be chipped in. So if you take the total operating expense, you add the debt service, and you subtract all the revenue that we applied to the budget in order to reduce the burden, our total assessment increase for all communities is $4,440,010. It's about a 24% increase. Again, it's a bit of an outlier because of the fact that we're borrowing about $3.7 million of more funding for our, for our school building project. And you'll see, this is the total assessment summary, which includes the debt service. And then I'll break it out. As you can see, again, we have 51 more students. Total, I should say, not to Woburn. Woburn has two more students. And so your operational debt service breakout typically is how cities would prefer to see this. Total operating assessment, total debt service, and total FY '25 assessment. You'll see that your total operating assessment is $2,366,79. Total debt service is $476,577, resulting in a total assessment of $2,837,256.
And no, in the past, again, sorry to jump in, there's been, you know, some towns have seen that the cities were paying a lot more less per student and that Woburn and just some of the other towns were paying a lot more. I'm glad to say that for the debt service, that everybody pays the same. So that you see, city like Revere that used to pay significantly less than Woburn, even though they had more students here, is paying significantly more. So it's, it's much more of a fear equation than we've seen with other issues in the past.
Can you pull up back one slide?
Yes, sure. Thanks. You're welcome. And that concludes my presentation. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counselor Demarest.
Do you have hard copies of this presentation?
I do, yes. I'm sorry.
Can I make a motion that we receive those and make part of our record?
Call those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Please, sir.
Thank you, Glenn.
Chuck, do I still have the floor?
Yes.
I'll wait until Glenn.
Yep, that's fine.
Counselor Demarest, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I'm glad that the debt service formula works how we wish the regular funding formula worked, because I think my colleague across the way there, Counselor Farulo, must have saw what I saw when there's two additional students and there's a $420,000 increase in, in the funding that goes from Woburn to the, to the, to the vote. So I know we've kind of beat this dead horse, but that funding thing is a problem. And, you know, not for us to solve, but it's a legislature thing. And this has been going back since I worked up there as an aide in 2009. They've been talking about it, where, you know, communities like Woburn kind of have borne the cost of most of the, most of the programming. Why, why was there a shift in the funding mechanism from the state this budget cycle, where the onus came more on the communities than?
Yep.
Was it, was it a philosophical shift, or was it basically you guys just got less of a line item?
No, again, it was every, the governor's office needed money to pay for other priorities. And those priorities, if you look at the budget, the amount of money that the school should have gotten is in direct relation to some of her new priorities.
Okay, so it's more of a prioritization shift as opposed to a philosophical?
Yeah, but instead of saying, "This is our priority," they changed a bunch of different formulas around and just slid them in. And it did get some press, so if you Google it, within a couple weeks after the governor released the budget, there were some newspaper articles. I'm shocked it wasn't headline news. There are, the majority of the districts within Northeast are looking at serious budget cuts, looking at serious layoffs within the next two weeks. And why people stay quiet about it, it's worrisome. We definitely voiced our concern, and we were impacted probably the least, probably, you know, within the top five towns that weren't impacted, Northeast was in that. But we still felt that it wasn't, it wasn't the right thing to do.
And just out of curiosity, I saw on one of the bullet points, excess and deficiency funds. So by statute, are you allowed to have, like, your own rainy day fund within your budget?
Only up to 5%.
Only up to 5% of the total budget?
Right.
Yeah, it's similar to our free cash.
I was just curious, because I don't think I'd seen that before.
Yeah, we try to use some every year. So before we left here, I wish I was joking. If you see us walk around making sure lights are shut off and anything we can to save money that can then go into E&amp;D, that can then cut down the budget contribution that you'd be required to have the following year. Some schools just decide, hey, we have a lot of money left, let's go spend it. We decide to try to get it into E&amp;D and carry it over to the budget.
Great. All right, thank you, Mr. Jim.
President Dillon.
How you doing tonight?
How you doing?
So my question is, on that $420,704 amount, that also includes two new students. And that breakout of the two new students is approximately how much?
Jay, do you have the number per student?
Yep. So basically, it's, your per pupil cost of assessment is $23,067 per.
About $46 grand.
Yes.
Thank you. More statement, appreciate what the vote does.
Thank you.
I'm in construction, property management, getting more and more difficult. They get plumbers, electricians, HVAC, right down the line. So keep up the good work. We need these workers. People don't realize, you know, when, when you don't have hot water, when your sewer's not working, you're not going to call an accountant, you know, you're going to be in trouble. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman.
Counselor Alajtoro.
Thank you, Chair. First off, thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. I'm newer to the council, so apologies, this has probably been answered in prior budget meetings. How is it determined how many students Woburn gets compared to other towns?
Perfect.
Cities and towns?
So the Northeast Regional Vocational Charter sets how the formula is, and it goes back before we were born. It's based on the overall high school enrollment for the entire district, the 12 cities and towns that feed into it. So you take the 13,000 students that are in the district, you divide it up. Woburn has, Matt, help me out, say 1,000, I'll do easy math, and they get a percentage of that percentage of the seats. So any surplus seats get re-divided amongst the remainder. So if a city or a town doesn't use their seats, because as you know, we have a way more applicants than we have seats, they get divided up amongst. You know, 16 years ago, when I started, we had many cities and towns that didn't use all their seats. We're now down to one, so.
Okay. And looking at the total fiscal year '25 assessment, or even the 2024 assessment, it looks like Woburn pays second highest, I think, compared to other cities and towns. And I don't know if this is a direct correlation or not, but I would assume, based on that, does Woburn have the second highest amount of seats at Northeast, or is that not the case? Where, I'd love to see how many students attend from each, each one of these communities, because I don't see that on any of these slides.
Jay, you should have been. So the majority of the budget, the way the, the assessment is calculated is the required minimum contribution is based on the income and property wealth of your citizens. The state determines based on the income and property wealth of your citizens, that's the baseline. Then we add the transportation component, the small transportation component, because most of it is offset by the reimbursement. So I guess the state has determined that Woburn, based on your income and property wealth, has, you know, is the second highest wealthy, oh, the second wealthiest community that's, that's.
Amongst all those cities and towns?
Contributing to Northeast.
So we've been, again, in 20 years, it's still hard to even understand for us, let alone explain. So the state determines how much each city and town can afford, and then they make up the difference. So they might say that Malden can only afford to spend $10,000 per student. Then the state would pick up the extra 10. In Woburn, they might say, Woburn's a wealthier town, they can afford to pay 18, and we'll pick up four. So in the end, we get the same amount for each student. What the difference is, is how much the state is going to kick in. And it's very similar to, again, Woburn High School versus, you know, Chelsea High School. The state's going to pick up the difference.
And that seems to be set by the state, not the school, correct?
1,000%. So this goes back to ed reform. And it's a formula that nobody understands completely. And it's been a frustration in every city and town, I think, in decades. And right now, Senator Lewis is, has a task force that's looking to reform that formula or the procedure.
Thank you. My last, my last thing, it's more of a, more of a request. I'd love for you to send over, because I'd like to see the breakdown of students per, per city and town. If you can get that over to our clerk.
Sure, sure. And we actually, I actually, is it in the regular budget? Before I leave, I can share, and you can make copies.
Is it in the, is it in the budget?
No, no, I brought the full budget, which, who do you send it to? The FinCom or the?
Yep. So I send it to all the city and town officials when it's, when it's approved.
Okay, okay, but we can get your head start on that.
That would be, that would be great.
The city, I believe the city council chair, I think I just sent it.
Okay, but we have some, so we'll share that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes, hi, good evening.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Thank you for all that you do. As Counselor Dillon said, we need these positions that, you know, that you are teaching these young adults. It's very important. Over the years, you have been very frugal, very diligent in making sure that you did not increase the percentage by much. And so when I see that this has happened, I believe you, because you've made sure in all the years prior to only increase as much as you possibly could and to take where you could, where you could, little bits. And so this increase, I do believe, must be coming from the state and the different processes that they've changed in their decisions. So, which is very sad, because it seems like they did not take that into consideration, how this was going to affect the cities. And now we're even seeing it with our school department, who will be after you. And they've talked about this. I want to thank you for bringing this forward and really explaining extremely well to us so that we could understand it. And to your point, you wonder why people didn't, weren't more upset about the changes. They probably did not understand the ramifications, what that actually meant to the cities and what kind of increase that meant. I have a feeling that's probably what it is. So I am hoping, now that people's budgets are coming forward, that maybe this can get some press, because wherever this money, whatever programs the governor is setting forth, obviously, that's her right to do so. But if it's going to be affecting so many cities with their budgets to the point where you said some are really going to have to do some drastic cutting, then she needs to rethink these programs and juggle that around, because it's really putting the cities and the schools especially at a deficit. So I want to thank you for letting us know that and understanding that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Demambr.
Good evening. I appreciate the presentation. I thank you. I'd like to talk about the construction costs for the new school. How are you guys, are you guys on budget for that as of now? Where is that going and where do you guys see it? Because we all know that building materials go up every quarter, it almost seems like, and it's been fluctuating in the last few years due to COVID and supply chains and all that stuff. So I guess my main question is, you know, where are you guys at with the project? I know there's the foundation, the steel's coming in. But cost-wise, as well as, do you forecast any types of variations or fluctuations regarding your budget by which you're going to be in a deficit?
Right, nope. We are 100% on budget. We're on schedule. We plan on, well, I plan on being under budget, even if that may be one cent. The goal is for Northeast to be under budget. Ms. O'Brien talked about the $23 million. We were here over a year ago presenting the new school project, and a gentleman, Charles Lyons, may he rest in peace, passed away. He sat in my office with me, and we worked on legislation to bring more money in, as Ms. O'Brien had mentioned. And it had passed. And the $23 million that came back to us was supposed to secure anything in addition to what we felt the school was going to cost. We, and I still don't know how, were able to say, "We're on budget. We're going to give that $23 million, a big portion of it went to Woburn, back to minimize your debt." I wouldn't have been able to do that if I wasn't completely sure that we were on budget. In addition to that, we secured, not to repeat Ms. O'Brien, $7 million in equipment grants after our MSBA allotment. And we're using that money then to buy equipment so that the money from the equipment line item would then go to any increases in materials and steel and such. So again, moving things around a little bit, and again, I always recommend this, really working with the state legislatures. We're up the State House constantly harassing Senator Lewis and, you know, some of our reps on the North Shore constantly, because we can get legislation approved that will bring money to your district, to our district. We need to be active, and we really were successful, fortunately, this year in that endeavor. And I hope to come back here next year and say, "Hey, we secured a couple million dollars more, and we're in better shape." And that's always the goal.
Well, I'd like to thank you for your diligence on that and staying true to it. And you got a bird dog, and I get it, almost 24/7, 365 days a year, and I know it can fluctuate. So I appreciate that. And one, I just want to put a shout out to all of your students that built a fabulous speaking podium that was revealed at our O'Brien rink ceremony. It was absolutely beautiful. So kudos to those guys. You guys do a phenomenal job over there, and I appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Counselor Mercer-Broome.
Thank you. I have no doubt that you'll come in under budget. For as many years as I sat in the seat, you folks, I don't know how you do it. You waste nothing. You're accountable for every penny. I encourage the new city councillors to go up to the school and tour and take a look at what... When you go, you'll see what I mean by, "There is no waste." I'm very excited that the building is going to be built so quickly. It seems like it's been forever, but I'm... Thank you. You provide an invaluable service to the students here from Woburn and the other surrounding towns. It's unfortunate, the way the state handles things sometimes for all of us here. But I thank you for what you do there and continue to do. And I know many of your students, for the last four or five, maybe even longer than that, although the trades don't require them to go off to college, are prepared to go off to college, and some of them do, because they want to start their own businesses. Not that you need to go to college to start your own business. You certainly don't. But the dynamic has changed at your schools so much. And keep doing what you're doing. We're very grateful. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, you want to get that?
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, Mayor Conkhan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
One second, Mr. Mayor. If I can remind the public, just if your phones are on ringing, please silence them, please. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
So we're here tonight, third night of budget review with the Finance Committee. Previous two nights, we dealt with the city side, department heads. So basically, half of the budget has been reviewed tonight. We've seen Northeast Volk. Next up is the Woburn Public Schools and their budget. I appreciate the attention that's been paid so far. Appreciate the questions. Appreciate the support. What I'd like to do at the outset, I think everybody has a copy of a revised intro page as well as a revised Page 30 of the school department budget. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't know if that could be formally introduced.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that updated top sheet and Page 30 be received.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for that. So that is the, basically, the new amended working proposed budget from my office to the city council for your review and your action. The only change is Page 30 with the school department, and of course, that impacts the overall cover page in the bottom line. Briefly, those changes come about in three buckets, and we've talked about this before, and I wrote about it at length in my five-page budget letter. The three buckets are basically potential offset savings that were built into the budget. If you look at the school department budget that was presented, well, that was voted on by the school committee, and you compare it with what I sent to you, it is exactly the same thing. The only difference is these buckets, these proposed offsets. And the three buckets were potential savings that might be realized as a result of redistricting, potential savings that might be realized as a result of an early retirement incentive driven by redistricting. And the third bucket was the potential savings realized by the continuation of the new arrival migrant student reimbursement from the state. What was presented to you on May 23 included those three buckets and specific line items for those buckets. Well, as you heard from our friends at Northeast Volk, and we've heard a lot as of late, the budget cycle this year is unlike any other, and everything is changing seemingly by the minute, but certainly by the day and the week. And what has changed since May 23, when I submitted that original budget and its original offsets, is that we've learned a few things. Things have gotten clearer, some decisions have been made that have essentially cleared up how valid those placeholders can be. I'm talking specifically about the school committee vote to no longer proceed with redistricting this year. Very difficult decision for them. I watched all of it. I know how hard they were working to try to make that happen. I know that they were attempting to solve what's been described as a crisis in the equitable educational experience that Woburn students are experiencing right now. I know they were working hard to solve that. And at one point, it appeared that their efforts to do that would also yield savings. What I included in my budget to you was a potential savings of $375,000, which was somewhat in line with the options that they had before them as they were pondering redistricting. But as we found out, they've made a decision that I don't disagree with, that circumstances have changed that makes redistricting much more difficult to try to get done this year. So they voted not to proceed with redistricting. They voted last night. I'll certainly let them speak for themselves in a minute. So it was only prudent that we remove that potential $375,000 savings from redistricting, since it's not going to happen this year. The next step was the potential savings due to an early retirement proposal. And there's a bit of history on that. I won't bore you with tremendous detail, other than to tell you that the notion of an early retirement incentive came about directly as a result of the redistricting discussion. At some point in the discussion, it did appear that redistricting could lead to significant layoffs of teachers. By moving the students around and utilizing space more efficiently and maximizing capacity, there was a potential that we would not need as many teachers as we have. There was a concern that we may end up losing a significant, significant number of young, energetic, new, vibrant, critical teachers in our system, and nobody was pleased with that prospect. So the idea was, what if we, school department, city council, mayor's office, decided to offer an early retirement incentive, paid for potentially by the city, that would yield a significant number of senior teachers choosing to leave, thus saving the positions of the newer teachers that might otherwise be laid off due to redistricting? So redistricting and early retirement went hand in hand. And the caveat to the early retirement proposal or concept was that, A, the city council would have to decide whether they thought that was an efficient use of city funds, and that was an essential part of the deal, critically important. And secondly, the numbers would have to make sense, or why would the city council ever do that? So as time went on and the process played out, and again, I'm speeding up, skipping over some things, but we get to the point where we're no longer going to do redistricting this year. So we're no longer looking at those layoffs. So the retirement proposal did not seem to have much merit at all. I don't think this council would entertain spending the amount of money it would take to fund the early retirement incentive for the minimal, if any, savings it would yield. That said, even though the school committee voted to include that $750,000 offset in their budget, what you see before you tonight is me putting that back in, because in good conscience, we could not leave it out. These are real numbers. This is the real situation. This council needs to have all of the information as it decides what it wants to do next. So you've got the $375,000 redistricting offset erased, put back in. You've got the potential $750,000 early retirement offset savings erased and put back in. The third bucket that was always on the table here was the potential anticipated projected savings that could come, or we believe may come, from the continuation of the migrant program and students continuing to come to Woburn. Many, many discussions with the school department about what that number might be, and none of us know. That's why these are projections. But we use a similar model elsewhere in our budget when we project numbers that we think we might get. We do it with Chapter 70 fundings. We just heard that discussion from Northeast Volk. We do it with grants. We did it with the $1.8 million special ed overage account from last year. And we do it, for example, with the fire department, with the BLS receipts. Same model. That's what we used when we came up with originally a figure for new arrival/migrant student reimbursement. The original figure in your budget was $950,000 potential savings, which is less than this year. But in further conversations with the school department, the school committee chair, they felt much, much more comfortable using a lesser number, not 950. 600,000 is roughly 25 more students coming to the Woburn system, a third of what we got last year, a number that is much more palatable as a projection. So the impact of the changes on your Page 30 are those three buckets, 375, 750, and then the 950 reducing to $600,000. That's what you have in front of you tonight. And I will tell you, that is exactly what the school committee voted for their budget for FY '25. The difference this year is that that number was built over the course of several months in discussions with the school department, school committee chairman, city council president, city auditor, myself. I had the opportunity to see in much more detail than I've ever seen before in my 10 years on the council, what is in the school department budget. So what I've presented to you is what I believe is the adequate number for the school department to operate next year. Now, you may ask yourself, and I know you will, you'll probably even ask me, why such a big increase in one single year? The largest single increase I've ever seen, and probably any of you have ever seen. And if you look at the back page of the letter I sent down on May 23, there's a breakdown of the significant budget drivers. And I won't bore you by reading it, but I would just tell you this in summary. You take last year's budget that was approved and that we used to run the school system... You take last year's budget that was approved and that we used to run the school system, then you add in certain necessary contractual mandatory costs, and you essentially get to the number that's in front of you tonight. For example, there was a contract negotiated last year. Negotiated, settled, signed, and it needs to be funded. And that is between $3 and $4 million when you add up the contractual salaries, as well as the impacts as a result of that contract to horizontal steps and lanes, et cetera. You also have the $1.7 million that we used last year to fund the school department out of ESER funds. That dried up. We all knew last year, when I sat right there, or right there, that that was drying up. So that's not a surprise either. We also have some additional costs that were incurred after July 1 that were approved by the mayor that the school department has utilized, 1.16. We have special ed out of district tuition costs increasing by about 800 grand. Special ed transportation increasing by a million dollars. Electricity costs, 635,000. Curriculum, 350,000. Homeless and general ed transportation costs increased 400,000. Cost for substitute teachers increasing 250,000. Cost to facilities increasing 150,000. Those are all must haves. So last year's budget, added to by these must haves, gives you the number that's in front of you tonight. It is fully funded. It's a lot of money, I know that. And there will be an impact to the taxpayers as a result. One thing I did learn through the process this year, well, I learned a lot, but I got eyes into how the school department budget is compiled, as well as how it's implemented and executed. And I found that invaluable, and that's something that I'm looking to continue. We've had a lot of conversations with the school department, and they've shared a lot, and I found it helpful. I like to think that me finding it helpful and you finding it helpful is helpful to them. It's going to allow them to do their job better now that we understand better what their job is and how much money they need to do it. So I'm asking them, and I'm asking this council, to bless a continuation of that cooperative effort we've had over the last six months, where we meet regularly with the school department and we look at their budget, we look at how they're spending it, and we get a better understanding of that, so that when they come to us with needs, we understand them. So I've asked the school department and the school committee chair to continue that relationship, that ongoing, at least monthly, relationship. I mentioned to this council that we already have a mechanism for something like that. We do it with police, fire, and DPW through our WUSTAT process. I would love for the school department to sit with us for that. So I don't want to go on much longer. I just wanted to give an introduction and set the table for where we are, at least in my perspective. Tonight's the night for the school department and the school committee to be able to make their case, give their summary, and of course, for this council to ask them questions about their budget. If you have any questions of me about their budget, I'm more than happy to answer them now, or I can, I'll be right here for the duration of the meeting. I can always jump up and jump in if necessary. So I thank you for your time, and if there's any questions of me, I'm available now.
President Dillon.
Yes. Mayor Concanon, just for the public, can you tell them what your proposed budget is so the public is aware of it?
Sure.
Please.
So the total budget of Woburn School Department would be $90,366,621.40, which is an increase of 14.53% over last year's budget.
And my second point, can you just describe for the public what WUSTAT contains in a brief description, which someone already did?
Sure. So WUSTAT is us stalling the notion of COMPSTAT, which is pretty widely known to government and industry. It's a frequent review of the ongoing status of data, primarily financial, but also metrics that help government bodies and other institutions gauge performance. So essentially, here in Woburn, we meet once a month with the police department, the fire department, and the DPW. We look at the budget that they were allocated at the beginning of the year, and we look at where they should be at that point in the year, whether it's 1/12th, 1/4th, 1/2th, wherever we are in the month, we look and see where they should be tracking with their percentages, line item by line item. We get to see, basically, we get to see whether the projections we made are accurate, whether they should be further tweaked for the next year, and we also get to see in real time whether there are problems looming, so we can deal with them immediately and not have to wait until they blow up into something more significant. I know that Councilor Farullo is very familiar with this. He participated in WUSTAT for many years. I've talked with him, and I know that he saw value in that. I think that explains it. I'm not sure if you need more, council?
No, I think that explains it. And just follow up on that, that has showed positive results, not only in cooperation, but in the end budget, just where everyone knows where they're heading, correct?
It does. And I think you'd find, and I think Chief Farullo would agree, that even though when these departments were first asked to participate in WUSTAT, it may have seemed like it was going to be painful and could lead to their budgets being cut. In almost every instance, it led to an opportunity for that department head to make a better, clearer, more valid argument for why they needed what they had and then some. In particular, I know with the fire department, that was an opportunity for Chief Kenton to make his argument that he was spending too much in overtime, and it was time to add some bodies to the department, and that's what was done as a result. So there are very positive tangible results from the WUSTAT process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alaj Farullo.
Mayor, just to follow up there, could you explain who facilitates WUSTAT, just so it's not an internally?
I'm sorry, chief.
Could you explain who facilitates WUSTAT? I think it would be beneficial.
Sure, yeah.
That it's not an internal process, it's an external process.
No, we have a contract with UMass Boston, the McCormick School. They do this around the state. Councilor DeMers is probably familiar with them. They come into communities, they use our data. We analyze what we think is important to analyze. They don't tell us what we need to do. It's financial, but it's also performance-based. And I've participated in several of them now, and I find it extremely helpful. And again, I think it's something that should be embraced, and I'm really hoping that our school department friends will agree.
Awesome. Councilor DeMers.
Actually, Mayor, my question to you is going to be, has the school department agreed to this? It sounds like there has been no agreement.
I think in principle, the idea of meeting frequently is amenable to them.
14.53%. I would hope we get more than just in principle for the WUSTAT, but we'll save that for a little bit. And in the WUSTAT, could you set it up so that you can see if money gets transferred from one place to another place and so on and so forth?
Yes.
Is that level of detail can be provided?
Yes.
Okay. This is a big number. You're absolutely right. And a lot of it is contractual, but there are some things that are not contractual. There's no doubt. We've talked about this at length. It has been no, I have made no to you or to anyone else how concerned I am about this number. I've been on this council a very long time. I've always supported the schools. For the first 10 years, I sat in this chair, my children didn't attend Woburn schools, but that would no way, this is a community. We support our schools. I've told you what my concern is with this number, is what is going to happen to our most vulnerable population. And I know we're going to talk about some of those things later on.
And I do share that concern.
I know you do, Mayor. We've talked about it. I know you do, and I appreciate that. So as we get more into it, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to find some savings that can alleviate the pain this is going to bring, and it will bring pain. So I thank you. I know you've been working with the school department for quite some time. Your tone is much different than when we last talked. It sounds like things are patched up or whatever, but at the end of the day...
No, there wasn't anything that needed to be patched up. We have a whole bunch of people who are working hard.
Okay.
To try to achieve the same goal, to provide the best education we can.
Okay.
At a dollar amount that the residents...
Oh, no, I understand. I understand. But again, you know, it's in front of us tonight, and everyone's going to have to decide on Monday, after we go back to our constituents and let them know what this is going to cost them. And then we make a decision from there. But I'm very, I can't wait to get into the details of it, and I'm looking forward to that tonight, so...
And you raise a great point, and I've said it before and I'll reiterate it tonight. There is a process here in Woburn by which a budget gets approved. We are all players in the process. School department has done its part, the school committee has done its part, I've done my part, and now it's the council's part, and that is to be respected.
Right, and I thank you for that. And thank you again for everyone in the room who's done, it sounds like, months of work.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the mayor? No, seeing none.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Superintendent Crowley?
Thank you, sir.
Chair Lipsit?
Members of the council, good evening. Thank you so much for having us all here tonight. On behalf of my fellow school committee members who are in the audience tonight and those who aren't, we are here to present to you the Woburn Schools FY 2025 budget. As we've already said and as we've already heard, this is a large budget. We are aware of that. It is a historic budget. That is because we are in a historic moment for the Woburn Public Schools. The pressures that we are facing are historic pressures. We have seen a confluence of pressures on our school budget, the likes of which we have not encountered. We have settled good contractual increases that must be met. On top of those, we have a rapidly growing student population. The Woburn Public Schools have enrolled an 8% increase, 8% increase in our total students since the start of this school year. That cannot be understated in terms of the need that we are facing and the need that our kids are facing. We have to meet those needs. The students who we are adding are largely high-need students. Those are students who come to us with either physical or learning disabilities. Those are students who are coming to us who do not speak English or who's home, do not speak English, who are learning English. These are students who are coming from low-income households. These are students who we know require more resources to provide an equitable learning environment, and we must meet that need. We have heard about ways in which state funding has put pressures on school funding, and that puts pressure on city funding. For us, chapter 70 goes to the general fund, right? That is a pressure that the city must bear. But it certainly impacts the school's bottom line. So when we began the process of this budget, this was a budget that the school committee and the school department wanted to make a transparent budget, as transparent as we have ever done, more transparent than we have ever done. In previous budget cycles and under previous administrations, the budget pressures on us required that we cut where we might be able to spend. And yes, we had to, at times, figure out how to meet that during the course of the year. What we are presenting to you tonight is the most transparent budget we have ever presented, and there's a reason for that. It's because we want to be fully and completely clear about what the needs and what the requirements of running the school district are. We have been under a lot of pressure over this process, as certainly I've spoken about with the mayor and with many of you. This is a later process than we are used to. I believe for the first time in anyone's memory, the school department passed a budget before receiving a firm and clear indication from the mayor on what our total appropriation would be proposed at. And I understand why that is, and I appreciate Mayor Concanon's collaborative approach. I appreciate the attempt to react to things as they come, try to meet the needs as they develop. But it has put us at a disadvantage, and we now sit in early June, not having clarity and not having had clarity on our budget, which puts additional pressures on us. We have not been able to hire for FY '25 to this point because of those uncertainties. We are facing potential shortfalls that could impact jobs at a later date than we would ever be, ever want to do. And so I come to you tonight to ask you to look at this budget beyond the politics and beyond the incidental needs, and think about the students. Think about what our kids require. You have other things to think about as well, and I hear those and I understand those. I'm a taxpayer. I have a two-public-school teacher household income. We will feel this tax increase. We will feel it, and I know that others will feel it much more. But the school committee has a singular requirement. We are defined by mass general law to look out for our constituency, the only constituency in the state that can't vote for its representatives, and that's the students of Woburn. This budget represents their needs, and so I am asking the council, and Dr. Crowley will come up and explain in greater detail, but I'm asking the council to look at this budget and try to understand why our students need this so badly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you, Dr. Crowley?
I'm well, thank you. Superintendent from Northeast took my joke about the Celtics, so I wished him well.
You must have more than one in your pocket, come on.
I'll do my best. First of all, I just, I thank you to the city council. This is the seventh time I've actually presented a school budget to you, and so I don't feel as nervous as I should probably, but I'm nervous because the number is so high.
Wait a minute, 14.53, and you don't feel nervous?
Yeah, well, I just said, the number's very high. So thank you to the city council, thank you to the school committee for their support, and thank you to many of the principals, the leadership team, and the Woburn Public Schools. I speak tonight, but I have a great deal of support and teamwork that make the dream work here in the Woburn Public Schools. Our budgeting process begins in January. Actually, if you don't know, you prob, we have a new finance director, Alex Dizio. He's a Woburnite, but want to publicly say that he's been doing a great job since joining our team this late fall. And we started our budgeting process in January. We meet with all the principals and the department heads. In meeting with principals, one of the things that we started this year, at the secondary level especially, we call it TLT, teacher leadership teams, to try to get feedback from teachers about what their needs are. And then the principals then convey that to the finance office, and then ultimately to me, and we begin the process of budgeting. As Mr. Lipsit said, and I think you probably all have this, again, credit to my team, Mr. Dizio, we are trying to be as transparent and open with you, but also the entire community about what our needs are and where they are. And so if at times you need me to reference this, we can. Mr. Dizio has the budget on his computer, ready to go, I hope. And so I want to frame a little bit, and Mr. Lipsit talked to it... ready to go, I hope. And so I want to frame a little bit, and Mr. Lipsit talked to it. Woburn, over my time, has changed dramatically, but even this, this year has changed. We've enrolled over three hundred and fifty students, as he alluded to. We've actually enrolled over five hundred, but we've lost students along the way to other communities. So there's a change of, of the, of the culture. We call it churn in the educational world. People are coming and going. Teachers will tell you this, their class lists in September look nothing like their class list now. And so there's a lot of effort on the beha- on, on the teachers to welcome new students in almost every day, and it's a credit to them that they're doing that. One of my proudest moments this year happened in August, late August. We got a phone call that we were gonna welcome new students into the Woburn Public Schools almost overnight, and we set up an enrollment center at the Alta Vesta and welcomed over seventy students, newly arrived migrant students, into the Woburn Public Schools seamlessly. I'm really, the next night, we went to Comfort Inn and enrolled at the hotel. We will do whatever it takes at any time of day for our kids and the community. And I think it speaks well to the community of Woburn that it's gone so well. We have had meetings with the mayor relative to the migrant students or the homeless, the hotel. Our kids are great. They're coming in every day. We're providing counseling at the Malcolm White as, as a trial. We'd like to expand that to all schools next year. Our newly arrived students are primarily enrolled at the Alta Vesta, Linskit, Malcolm White, and the Goodyear. One of the major costs affiliated with this is transportation because the students come out of the Sinesta Hotel. They're not all going to the same school. Because of class size, we've had to move students into different grade levels. And so I, I'm, I'm just pointing out the complexity of what we did, and I think we did a great job as a school district and as a community. Mr. Lipsit alluded to a percent of high-needs students. What that is composed of are special education students. Twenty-five percent of our kids, one quarter of our kids, are now special education, qualify for special education services. So again, if you think about being a teacher and what that might feel like in your classroom, it's a lot different than it was just a few years ago when we were in the lower teens. Fifteen percent of our students are EL. They don't speak English. Again, a couple years ago, that was five percent. The challenge for teachers is real when these students are in front of you and you're having trouble communicating with them. The majority of our positions, and I'm sure you're gonna ask, or I hope you do, are in special education and in EL to support our teachers. The other component that makes up the high-needs population is economically disadvantaged students, and the combination of those three buckets create this high-needs population. In 2020, as a frame of reference, our high-needs population was forty-five point four percent, so pretty high. In 2024, it's fifty-six point three percent. So what I'm saying to you is fifty-six point three percent of our kids are high-needs. That's challenging for, for our staff. That's what we're trying to do in this budget. We added reading specialists at the elementary school. We have students that are not reading at grade level. If you've been following in the newspapers, you've been seeing this. Woburn's no different. We need to maintain the reading specialists as an example. I'm very pleased to, to hear Mayor Concanon's remarks tonight. I almost feel like I just wanna stop talking because I, he said quite a bit of, of what, what I was gonna say. Actually, I don't, funny story, sort of. It's not a joke.
Go.
No, I was thinking about it with Northeast Folk. I don't know if you remember, Mayor. When I first started, you and I took a field trip up to Northeast Folk because you, he was interested in learning what Woburn could do differently to support students so we wouldn't have, quote, "so many students" necessarily opting into Northeast Folk. And as a result, we started the innovation pathways. Science coordinator at the high school started innovation pathways, raised millions of dollars in grants, and we have advanced manufacturing and biotechnology pathways to students here in Woburn. We do need HVAC people. We do need electricians. We can't do everything here, but we're trying to do what we can to keep students from Woburn, in Woburn, and that, that was one of the attempts, and that was a few years ago. So I guess I'll, I'll pause because if you've seen this document, you, you know our budget drivers, you know the changing student population. I will tell you that our teachers are great. They deserve every penny. The, all, all staff are great, paraprofessionals, the custodians, bus drivers. We have a great community of, of people helping our kids. And so I understand the, the percent increase. I'm trying desperately to come up with a joke, but it is a serious business, and so I'll stop and, and take questions.
Counselor Torre.
Dr. Crowley, thank you very much. I haven't been in a lot of the meetings with you and President Dillon and the mayor and, and our auditor, but I've followed the budget pretty closely, and we've had multiple conversations along with Chair Lipsit and some other members of the school committee. So first off, thank you. Thank you to your team, too, Maureen Courtney, Alex, Andrew for the, the conversations, Jesse, and also the city side, you know, with Mike and Charlie. You spent a lot of time on this budget. It, it's been reiterated multiple times that it's a historic one. We all know that, and we all know that it's gonna have an impact on our residents, you know, to include all of us, or most of us. With that being said, it seems like, you know, based on my review of the budget and my conversations, that a majority of the money that's being asked for are for DSE mandates to address rising costs, contractual agreements. It's been stated on multiple occasions, both in school committee meetings and our committee meeting in the committee room and during conversations, that this budget doesn't factor in any quote-unquote "wish-list items." You know, it's, it's what is needed to address the needs of our population. And Dr. Crowley, you mentioned our high-needs population, our EL population, and how much it has increased over the last three, four, five years. That is attributable, you know, the costs increased because of those populations increasing. You know, it, again, it's a tough situation to be in, but investing in our schools is an investment in our community, you know? We want our schools to thrive, our children to thrive. It's a foundation of our community. So I do agree that regardless of whatever budget is passed, you know, there'll be no vote tonight, and that will be on Monday. Again, it will have an impact on our taxpayers. However, my opinion only, if we, you know, I recommend that our, the councils on this, that are sitting here tonight when they're looking over the budget and trying to make a decision, that they understand that making cuts to the budget, it will impact our schools much more, much more negatively than it will benefit the bottom line. You know, taxes, I think at this point, everyone understands that taxes are going to increase. You know, for a frame of reference, cutting a million dollars from a budget will have a small, a small, be a small increase or small decrease in what the tax increase will be, but will have a detrimental impact on our schools. I do have a few questions that I'd like answered. One of them, I think you addressed them a little bit, but Chair Lipsit, can you expand a little bit on kind of the pressures associated with this budget and kind of really what's driving them? I know we're, we're looking at the, the major components and stuff, but if you could just elaborate a little bit more on that, that'd be great.
Sure, and, and Dr. Crowley can as well, but, you know, we have seen, and, and, you know, I think, I think we've all seen, you know, inflationary pressures are real. They are real in our schools. They are real in terms of costs for contracts, costs for supplies, costs for the, just the, the simple costs of doing business have gone up. At the same time, and as, as Northeast Folk said, our adjustments from the state have not gone up at that same rate, and that, and so that is an additional pressure. The needs of our students have increased, and, and, you know, this is true of, of our, of our, you know, our students who are defined as high-needs, those with disabilities, those who are learning English, those who are, come from economically disadvantaged households. But it also, you know, it presents in other ways as well. It presents in the social, emotional needs of our students, which are, and I can tell you this both as a school committee member, as a parent, and as a, as a classroom teacher, higher than I have ever seen. Our students, many are in crisis that were not several years ago. And, and I think the causes for that are varied, and I, you know, I think that is a, a, a subject of, of great debate. But it doesn't matter what the reason is when they are in our buildings and they need our help. And, and the positions that we are trying to so desperately keep are the ones that, that, you know, that are helping our students deal with those pressures. And I'm not just in this case talking about things like guidance counselors or adjustment counselors or, you know, things that might be necessarily associated with soc- with, with social, emotional health, but things like art, things like music, things like language, right? Things like, you know, the, the enrichment that we can offer our kids, that we, that we should offer our kids. You know, these are the things that are there to support students who love them, and also there to support students who need them. There to support students who rely on them to, to regulate, to find outlets, right? So that's a pressure. Rising transportation costs, the contracts of, of our, you know, we are in the process of, we're going to open up transportation negotiations. Like, these are pressures that are, are increasing due to a lot of the things, you know, a lot of the pressures that are increasing all over, right? And I know that I'm missing some, and so I'll turn it over to Dr. Crowley to fill in the gaps. But I mean, the fact that I'm missing some, and the fact that I've, I've been speaking for as long as I have and I'm still missing some, speaks to the level of pressure that the schools find themselves in. The schools are, you know, when, when socioeconomic pressures hit, the schools are often the first places that feel them. Our kids are often the first places, the first people that feel them. And the schools have become the safety net for a lot of kids, and what we are able to offer our kids is, is what helps get them through. And so, you know, that, I think, is, is the bottom-line pressure that we're feeling, is, is what we do benefits kids who need it. And that, and benefiting kids who need it helps families, and it helps a community. Those ripple effects are great.
Do you want to add anything before I add?
No.
Yep, okay.
I didn't miss anything?
You stole, you stole the show. I think I know the answer to this question, or at least what you're going to say, but I'm gonna ask it for the public. I know there's been a lot of time spent on this budget, on both sides, between the mayor and, and your office. Is there anything that you feel like, in this budget, if needed to, can be cut to save the citizens or the constituents of Woburn some of the burden that, that will come across once the budget's passed?
No.
Just to clarify the migrant money, I know the most amended budget had that funding offset decrease from nine fifty to six hundred. That is a reimbursement by the state for students that are coming in or attending school this coming fiscal, this coming year? Is that correct? I don't know. Either one can answer.
I, I can answer the question. I just want to ask you to clarify it.
Yeah, so I guess my question ultimately becomes, so the six hundred thousand dollar offset that's put in the budget by the mayor, are we intis- is that for students that we're expecting to enroll this coming year?
Sure.
Students already enrolled, and then my next follow-up kind of question of that is, does your budget that we're looking at here have costs or, or expenses associated with those students?
Okay. So the offset that you're referencing are for students that are gonna enroll in September or that enrolled after October first of this year?
Okay.
And, does that?
That answers part one.
You want more?
No, no, that answers part one. Then I guess, does, because what I'm really trying to get at is, does that migrant money that comes in, is it, is it additional money that's needed to address these new students, or is there, is the expectation that these post, was it post-October one, the students that came in plus the potential of these new students that enroll in September, is there already money baked into the budget to address their needs, and then this money that comes in is more of a, a reimbursement to the city, to the, to the school department?
Okay, so in the budget, our positions that we put in this year, because we fully expected these students to stay with us next year. We added a, a few EL coach, teachers, rather, family liaisons. So in the budget, our positions that we used this year and and pushed them into the, we, we used the grant money, and then we pushed them into the budget.
Okay.
There was another part to your question?
No, that's real. I, I was just trying to figure out is, you know, because if we didn't have this offset in, so my thing, and I said it during the, the committee meeting, is I like the idea of the offset because with us having such a big budget increase, I, I don't think it would be fair to the constituents of the city to not bake that into the budget and have this, this, the, the school department come back with additional or extra, quote-unquote, "extra income" at the end of the year, when that could have been given back to the city and be, and be a potential savings to the residents, lessening the tax, potential tax burden. That, that's the main.
Yeah, so if I, want me to keep going?
Go for it. I think I know what you're gonna say, but go for it.
So I, I want to actually clarify this a little bit. This newly arrived grant is designed to support newly arrived students. It's not designed to, grants are, aren't designed to supplement, or supplant, rather, there's supplement. And so the newly arrived grant that we're getting, the money should be used to support these students. And so, as I alluded to, I know the Sinesta houses the majority of our students, but they go to all four elementary schools, so our transport, we don't just run one bus. We run multiple buses to move the students to the schools that they attend. And so that's the intent of the money. I just got a request. We have a family liaison, Nellie, who's wonderful.
She is.
We have a partnership with Burlington where we do physicals for families. She asked if we could get a bus. I just say yes because that's our, we're, that's what we're supposed to be doing with this money. It's designed for that purpose.
Okay. I have one more question, and then more of a request, and then I'll, I'll finish up. Being one of the at-large councilors and representing the whole city, I've gotten a lot, I've had a lot of conversations with many people throughout the city, and one of the big concerns, you know, I've had mixed, mixed emotions, some that support the, the, you know, give the schools what they want, raise my taxes, and some that were on the other side. But one of the main questions that I have been getting was, what's to stop this from happening next year? What's to stop another fourteen percent increase? And I think it's a little bit of an easier pill to swallow if it's more of a one-time expenditure, a one-time budget increase, and then it gets back down to normal. I know, I know a lot of these are mandates, contractual agreements, addressing rising costs, and a result of underfunded budgets over the last ten-plus years. I understand that. But what's to stop us from being here discussing the same thing next year?
Well, I can tell you that schools can't run on a three percent budget any, anymore. It, it's just, just contractually, it, it can't. just, um, just contractually, it, it can't happen. The expenses are too, too high every year, and so I want to be upfront about that. Um, the mayor, we have, we've, ESER money has, has gone away. Um, this budget doesn't include ESER money. Um, I can't tell you what the percent, uh, for next year will be, because I don't know what the, the percent for this year will be. So if things don't get funded this year, I'm going to ask again next year.
Okay. Um, and?
But I re, but I should, I should be clear. I, a 14, uh, this is unprecedented, and I really don't, um, I, I don't want to intend to advocate for any, a percent of this magnitude, but I, I tell the mayor, or whoever, my job is to advocate for the students and staff of the Woburn Public Schools, and that's what I'm trying to do. I also am cognizant that we're a piece of the Woburn, of the city of Woburn, and so I respect, you know, the police, fire, DPW, all of the other departments. Um, but I'm not doing my job if I'm not advocating for the kids.
And, and if I could just add to that, uh, I mean, one thing that, that we do need to keep in mind is, you know, we have seen such a dramatic student population increase this year. Um, that will have an impact on our Chapter 70 in, in the coming year, uh, or, or at least down the line. Um, but in addition, you know, that's, there's a level of unexpected pressure there, right? Uh, if, 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 if we see continual population increase, that's something that we have to react to. We, you know, we have a literal constitutional mandate to educate the students of Woburn, right? Um, so there, you know, I think, you know, Dr. Crowley's absolutely right. You know, this is not a budget that we wanted to present. It's not a number that we wanted to have, and we want to have a, a manageable number. We have to respond to our students' needs. I think that there are a lot of reasons why this number could and should be lower next year, a great deal lower, but there's a level of unpredictability to it, and I don't want to, I don't want to dance around that.
Um, can we, can I say something?
Yeah, I just, I, I wanted to just let the council know, uh, this budget didn't include 48 additional asks. And so, uh, the, you know, we, we really did our, our best to, um, try to make sure that what we're asking for is what we need. And I didn't mean to be curt when I just said no. Um, but for a lot of paraprofessionals support, mostly at the kindergarten, grade one, um, every year, the elementary principals come in and say, we'd like a, a paraprofessional in every kindergarten and grade one. Um, but obviously, the youngest, most fragile learners need that support. Um, the asks were for, um, building substitutes, um, a daily, one person to be dedicated every day to each elementary school. Uh, the facilities department was asking for an assistant director. Obviously, you know very well that we have one, uh, director of facilities. Um, we, there's no assistant director of facilities. Um, having lived, uh, through this year, uh, with the facilities department, but also some of the departments at, at central office, you know, we have one payroll clerk. A, a district our size should have two or three. Uh, we have Mr. Dizio and, and Patty. That's it. Like, we, we're pretty lean in a lot of spaces. And so, um, when you think about building a bench, if something were to ever happen to a person, um, sick or ill, whatever the case may be, um, we don't have a lot of depth. And so, um, again, I'm, I'm just sharing that there were multiple asks that were here on the original wish list that aren't in the budget.
Um, and lastly, uh, so I know we're not voting on this until Monday. Um, I will say that I am inclined at this point to support the mayor's budget. Um, I think it's a big number. I think it's going to be a lot. I think we're going to have some conversations, like, um, Councilor Mercer Bruin said, about how we're going to shield some of our vulnerable population, our seniors, our veterans, our low-income families, you know? Um, I think that's going to be something that this council needs to take care of, no matter what the end result is. Um, but I do, I am inclined to support this budget. I do ask, um, the school committee and the school department to continue the collaborative approach, um, those monthly meetings. Uh, I, I would love for the council and the school committee to meet somehow. I'd love to see the school committee, uh, or the school department become part of that WUSTAT program like Mayor Concanon said. Um, it seems to be like a, it seems to be a great program. Um, I think, I think, um, Councilor DeMambrano mentioned it last year when, uh, you know, wasn't sitting in this seat, but there was a conversation on, we need to start talking about the budget now, and this was right when it passed. And, you know, I think we need to consistently, being the largest department in our city, I think we need to consistently have open lines of communication, transparency, and conversation, so we can address things as they come, instead of waiting for budget seizing and, and, and dealing with things like we're doing now, even though I feel as though this approach, this, this time around, was much more collaborative than it has been in the past. So, I appreciate your time. I appreciate all your staff's time. Thank you very much, and I am finished.
President Dillon.
How are we doing tonight? So, I'll, I'll start with the first question I asked the mayor. What is the budget you're looking for, for the public out there, so they know?
The 14.53%.
Okay, the dollar amount? Would, can you repeat?
90 million, 366621.
Thank you.
And 40 cents.
So?
And 40 cents. Thank you.
I ask that because there's people at home watching this saying, well, what are they asking for? So let, just to be specific, um, my next question, and I've said this in chambers before, and I'll repeat it. I just want to clear up what perhaps some other people that I've heard out in the public, that this budget isn't coming in like this because of the migrants situation. So I think that needs to be clear, and I'll even go a step further. I think the last time I asked this question, we had about 80 students. Has it increased?
Uh, I think 80 is about, about the right number.
And, and we're getting reimbursed. So, this number that we're looking at here today is not the result of that.
No, no.
So that's one of the things I, you're here out there, and it's important, when we have the audience in an important setting like that, that we clarify. Um, going on what you two gentlemen just spoke about, about people, the makeup of Woburn, I say this ironically, when the first $2 million house just recently closed in Woburn, but I truly believe was still a blue-collar city. I came from a blue-collar city. My father was a custodian over at the high school. My mother stayed home. We had five kids, a nephew that lived with us, and a grandmother. One bathroom in a 1,300-square-foot home. Couldn't have had a better life. Couldn't have had a better childhood. When I say that, I say it because I don't want to think I'm talking down about blue-collar. I know what it's like to really have to stretch a budget. And what you folks, you have to be conscious of what we're looking at. Every time we come with a budget like this, we're looking at hurting and making more pain for the very people that you're trying to protect. Uh, I'll give you an example. The people who are out there working two jobs, trying to make the mortgage. Well, this tax increase is going to hurt them. It may really do more than hurt them. It may bury them. I, I worry about that. The renters, that is a good population of our students. Believe me when I tell you, the landlords aren't going to say, ah, I got a hefty tax increase, not a problem, part of business. They're going to pass it right on to their tenants. This concerns me. We have our elderly, I, I think of my 93-year-old mother-in-law, trying to stay in the house. So, we don't take it lightly, your budget, but there's the other side. And that's why I, I was happy to see the, working together with the mayor, school committee, myself, and really trying to figure this out. I wish the result was a little better, but it wasn't from lack of effort on everyone's part. I truly believe that. Uh, when I think about that part of it, that's why I think when Councilor Toho brought it up, that WUSTAT, don't look at it as an overreach, that we're trying to get you involved to know where all the money's, or trying to take some power. Councilor DeMambrano said it last year, right after the budget. He says, I don't want to be in this same situation next year. Let's get working on it right away. That's what that will achieve. We need to get this right, so we don't go through this every year. History shows we go through it. We're doing the same thing over and over. Takes a toll on you, takes a toll on the school committee, takes a toll on the mayor, the city council, and it takes a toll on our citizens. So whatever we're going to do, once we get this done, let's try to figure that out. My last point, I believe, was this 14% increase, we talk about contracts that we're obligated to. I say this not to put a rap on the teachers. They got their contract that's behind us. I say this so that the public understands that 14-plus percent increase, how much is that actually of our teachers' contract?
That's, is that the question?
Yes.
Just the teachers?
Just the teachers' contract that we are contract obligated to.
So I can say that I don't have that number offhand, but if you went to the back of the budget packets, where each of the, um, departments are broken out, and you went and looked at the breakout, um, let's see, by teaching staff, that would tell you exactly what. So you'd have to go sort of line item by line item.
Okay. Would it be safe to say a substantial amount of that increase?
Yes, I would say so.
That carried over. Is it 30%? Is it 40%? Or?
So 75% of the budget is salaries.
Correct, yeah.
That, that I can tell you.
Yeah?
And of the 75%, the, I think it's a, a, 5 million, I'm looking quickly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are salaries.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Constable DeMambrano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Crowley, Chairman Lipsit, thank you for being here tonight. As someone who sat on the school committee and went through the budget process, uh, six times, uh, we basically, and I, my former colleague, Ms. Chisholm's in the crowd tonight, um, we probably, on average, had 3% to 5% for six years in a row, and I think the chickens are coming home to roost now. Um, you know, I take great pride in our schools in Woburn. I support our teachers. I see the great professionals we have here tonight, but, you know, I look at how we've built out some of our administration, our curriculum coordinators and everything, and I kind of wish I was still there to see how they were doing all this. Uh, and, and, and basically, I mean, you know, the, the school budget is more volatile than a NASA rocket practically. I mean, when it comes to the high needs of children shifting, I'm obsolete in my knowledge of knowing what goes on in the school, and I was last serving on the school committee in 2020. Um, I just want to go through a few line items. This isn't any pointed effort. I don't, I, I haven't made up my mind on, on any of it, but I just wanted to flush out my understanding, so that I have a better understanding of these line item increases, because I know the cost of, everything's gone up, and I just want to touch base on a few. So substitute teachers, I know we discussed that at our committee hearing. Um, that line item is proj, projected to go from 550 to 800,000. Is that based on expected need, a higher rate of pay that we adjusted, or is it a combo of both?
Um, it, so during COVID, we adjusted the rate of pay from $90 a day to $125 a day.
Correct.
So, um, we've also used ESER money to, to pay for substitute teachers. That was an allowable expense with ESER. Um, we also have more staff out than we've had before, um, for a combination of reasons. Um, and so, what we did was do, look back at a three-year average. Mr. Dizio and Ms. McKinnon looked at a three-year average and budgeted the right number. Um, it's a number where we, um, you know, when we talk about reducing places, um, you can reduce a sub-line item. It doesn't affect a kid right in that moment.
Right.
But?
But you're playing poker with it, basically.
Right. And so, what we tried to do, and this is a, I'm glad you asked, what we tried to do is build the, the budget to accurately reflect what we need.
Okay. Uh, next one would be the, uh, electricity line increase. So on the major components sheet, oh, no, not major components, my apologies, it was the two sheets previous, maybe, three sheets previous, the budget drivers. Uh, electricity line increases is 635,000 of 5.6% of, 5.6 point, excuse me, 5.61% of the budget, um, for the drivers. But when I found the electricity line, it only showed that it was going up 195,000. Did I read that wrong?
Yeah, 1.9.
If you could come up to my microphone.
Um, it's going up to 1.9 million this year.
Okay, but from previous, yeah, that's 635,000?
Correct.
Projected?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, on the curriculum department?
Stay close, yeah, I'll stay right here.
Now, I'm just, I just want to go through it relatively briefly. There's a line item there that, 151,000 increasing to 396, 449. I'm just curious as to why the, why the jump?
Yep. Um, so, uh, we use ESER money to?
And, and as former, my former colleague, Mr. Meadows, used to say, these are leading questions. I'm trying to flush out some of these areas, so.
Um, sorry to interrupt you. Yeah, so, um, we're, we're looking to, uh, implement high-quality, um, instructional materials in the curriculum department. We're updating outdated printed materials. Uh, we're maintaining, um, our elementary interventionists, who were funded in ESER previously. Um, we have lead teachers now. That was contractually up, negotiated. That, that's funded through the curriculum department. And because of the professional development on the half-days that we now offer, um, we, we're having people come in or paying teachers to do things to, um, and that is leading to the increase.
Great. Uh, when it comes to paraprofessionals, I see we have 140 full-time equivalent paras in the district. And I don't want, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and maybe Maureen might have an answer for me, but what, what total out of the 140 are one-to-one? I know that kind of puts you on the spot, and it's something that you can get back to me with if you don't have the number now. It's not something that I'm?
I, I, I don't have the, I'll get back to you.
I'm just curious, because the one-to-one is something that we have to do.
Right.
And, you know, when I was on the school committee, one of the things that I always talked about was, I'd love to have more full-time teachers.
Yes, so I would say
For classroom folks.
That the majority of our paraprofessionals are in our programs, and whether or not they are identified as one-to-ones, they are in classes where you might have, usually it's more of a two-to-one ratio.
Sure.
But the majority of your paraprofessionals are in your programs with high-need students, and those are the students that we are keeping in district, as opposed to sending them out of district. There's a very small percentage of paraprofessionals that are utilized in resource rooms with larger populations.
And I thought that was a point and distinction that needed to be made here tonight. So I appreciate that information. Thank you. Um, I know, I know during our committee meeting, the curriculum coordinator positions were brought up, and I did my best to vociferously back those up. Um, I think that's a great ad that we did when we had lean budgets, uh, trying to make sure that, um, we had horizontal and vertical, uh, alignment throughout the district and our curriculum. Um, and I, you know, I just want to caution my colleagues, you know, any type of cut, if we're not looking to look at forward-facing teachers in the classroom, uh, or the mandated positions are required by state statute, you know, we would, we would put at peril, um, an important addition to the school district. I think, I think that's, that's one of the, the key pieces over the last 15 years that we've really done, expand, and also expanding for our high needs. and also expanding for our high needs. Let's see. On the full-time employees that are going to be added to this budget, is there any way we could get a breakdown of those, like, separate from the budget? Is there a list of the 16? Because I know, Dr. Crowley, you just mentioned that there were 48 additional asks. I'd love to see that, too.
Sure.
Just for the future.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, a majority of what occurred during this budget process is there was sticker shock. We saw the number, especially me. I don't think, when I was on the school committee, I had to do much more than I have in this budget, because I've actually had to read this budget and look at it and go line by line to see where these changes have been made, because we didn't have much for increases when I was on the school committee. So I think knowing what your plan is, what your department's asks are in the future, would better help me support what we can do in the future for our schools. You know, Woburn's changing, and, you know, there are some folks that are scared of that. But I think what we need to do is see what we have in front of us and address the needs that we have and our responsibilities to our kids. One of the unfortunate things is folks are in a silo. They kind of only look at our school district from when they last attended or when their last child graduated. It's markedly different. When I was in high school, when I graduated Woburn High School in 2003, our non-white population was 3%. That's grown tremendously. Our socioeconomics have shifted, the high-need students, ELL, everything across the board. When I look through this budget, other than hacking away at little $25,000 or little $50,000 in line items that you may have to come back here and ask for us for more money in March, I do not see any waste or any money that, you know, any cuts would do a great job in preserving the impact on the taxpayer. You know, I'm not gonna make cuts that are gonna hurt the school district to save someone 25 bucks. I can't do that. I don't have, my conscience won't allow me to do that, because I think there's not much discretionary spending here. Okay? So I just wanted to speak up on that, because, you know, there's a lot of talk in the community, there's a lot of talk amongst the elected officials here, and I just wanted to get that off my chest, because I think, you know, this is our moral responsibility to our students. Our classrooms and schools should be cathedrals of learning, but they're more and more so social service centers now. And that's a responsibility that we have to pick up. And I'm proud to say that I served on the school committee, support the schools, and I've got some more work to do in terms of looking at it and making my decision for Monday. But I just want to ask you a few yes-or-no questions, because I think these are important to note also when we do the budget. Do our students have to pay bus fees?
No.
Do our students have to pay athletic fees?
No.
Do our students have activity fees?
No.
Do our students pay technology fees?
No.
And does every child get a lunch that needs one?
Yes.
So I think we're doing a great job in that effort, and I've got a lot to think about before Monday, but I thank everybody for everything that they do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Papalatto.
Thank you. Clearly, we're in an extraordinary situation here. I mean, there's a lot of things lining up that are causing, that's driving all this. Clearly, your budget driver page lays it out pretty nicely. But this is an extraordinary amount of money that we're asking for here. And I checked internally, this is more than twice as much as the highest increase we've ever gotten out of the schools. Twice as, more than twice as much as what's been asked for in the past. So when you look at the inflation, you look at the economy out there, and you look at the other school systems that are out there, and what they're doing, and the struggles that they're facing, it's just an awful lot that we're asking from the taxpayers. And when I look at the people that I've talked to in my ward and out of my ward, the people up at the senior center, there's gonna be a significant issue with them coming up with this extra amount. And what I'm being told is it's gonna be in the $600 to $800 for an average household. $600 to $800 increase on an average house in Woburn. So an average house in Woburn, I think it was 580 or 585 or some number like that. So when you do the math, there's gonna be significant increases to everybody's tax The other point I want to make is that, and I totally get what you, when you said, your job is to give the students of Woburn the best possible education that you could give them. And I agree with you 100%. That is your job. Our job has, it's twofold. Yours is singular. You're looking at it through one lens, right? We need to look at it through different lenses, because we have a taxpayer component to this that we have to factor in. And so when we're looking at both of these things, you look at it differently, because you have to look at it differently. I'll tell you, my phone's run off the hook, I'm getting emails, I'm getting, everywhere I go, they're concerned about what this is going to do. And the other question I have is, we're looking at this increase of whatever it is, 50, 14%. So that's assuming that the $79 million that is already in the budget is being stretched to the limit. So there might not be a lot of savings that you could find in the additional ask that you're asking for right now, but again, there's $79 million there. There's gotta be some savings that you can get out of there. And I know we're not gonna save $5 million. I have no illusions of that. But there's gotta be some amount of savings that we can take to lessen the burden on the taxpayers. You know, I certainly would support the largest increase we would ever have, but this goes beyond that. It goes beyond what I can comfortably support and what the residents that I speak to will put me into this position to speak for them. And I just feel like we need to find some percentage to get this thing reduced for me to support this. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Ms. Brown?
Oh, no.
Good. Superintendent Crowley?
Thank you. I hear you. Thank you for your comments. One of the things that I just want to highlight to the council is the operational side of running a school district. We have contractual obligations to our staff by June 15th to let them know if they have a job. And so any significant cuts, reductions to this budget, depending on the number that you're alluding, that you're gonna vote on Monday, will give us three days to let our staff know that they may or may not have a job in June. So I'm just, I'm just being...
So the other part of this is that, you know, the teachers are on the front lines. They got the toughest job of anyone. I'll always believe that. But this budget isn't just teachers. It goes far beyond that. There's all kinds of middle layers of management, an assistant, this and director of that. There's a lot of positions in there, and I'm sure that most of those are needed. But there's gotta be some kind of reduction we can add into this to offset some of this. That's all.
Counselor Ms. Brown?
This is, nobody here takes this lightly. I don't think I've slept a full night before 3:00 AM since this budget came up. I have sat in this seat for 18 years and never, ever once thought about not supporting a school budget. Never even crossed my mind. And that's what's keeping me up, because I don't know if I can at this number for exactly the same reasons that Counselor Papalatto expressed. The very same people that we're trying to help, Matt, you talked about the percentage of economically challenged students in our city. This kind of tax increase could leave some of them homeless. This is huge. And I know everybody on this council and everybody on the school committee, can we absorb this? Yes. Will we have to make a few adjustments? Sure. But there's a lot of people that aren't going to be able to absorb this, including our seniors. And we say, well, we haven't raised taxes in a long time. It's been a long time. The city of Woburn might not have raised our tax or increased our per-thousand, but the taxes have gone up a lot, because the value of the property has gone up. So for us to say, well, we've never, we're still collecting all of that revenue. So I'm really, really struggling with this. I want to do what we can do for our students, for our teachers. They got their raises, and you know what? That was, some of that was long overdue. But to Counselor Papalatto's comment, there's got to be somewhere we can find some savings. I'd like to think maybe we could find it on the city side? We can't, that's all but level-funded. I can think of maybe one, off the top of my head, one position that could be eliminated, but really, there isn't any savings. And it's, it's just really hard. It's really hard. We need to take care of everyone. So I think it's important that people understand what this cost is for the community. I don't think a lot of people really know what that number is, so it's time to start sharing it. And I'm just urging you, if there's anything that you can do, please, please do it for the residents of the city. And I applaud you all for doing what you were elected to do, to look out for that population. But we have a much bigger burden here, a much bigger burden, and a responsibility to do it no matter what. So thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you for everything. I hope we can figure it out.
Well, you could call me at 3:00 AM if you want. I'll be up.
Look at the bags.
I know. Not yours, mine.
I'm...
No, again, I don't mean to make light of it, and I appreciate the conflict.
And I've spoken with the mayor, I've spoken with Andrew. We had a conversation, a long conversation yesterday, and I think some of my frustrations were coming through. But they're frustrations, because I'm worried about our constituency and how this is really going to hurt them. And what about, the school is so important. This, like I said, there's the conversations about utility bills not being able to be paid, or maybe even rent not being able to be paid. But then there's the other conversations that might happen. I'm sorry, maybe you can't skate this year, or maybe you can't have those dance classes. Those are real things that will happen, too. And I'm not undermining the importance of what we do in our schools. I'm not. But all of those things matter, right? So I'm mostly concerned about when we talk about people potentially being pushed out of their homes. That is very difficult for me to get my arms around.
Thank you. I, again, my concern with, and I just said it, and I'll repeat it, is it's June 5th, or 6, rather, June 6th. I don't even know what day it is. And you're gonna vote the budget on the 10th at a number. On May 14th, I believe, I was with the council, and we've been operationally frozen, because we can't hire, we're losing people to other districts right now, and if we have to make radical changes to the budget, and I understand, I genuinely understand where you're coming from, my concern is our staff and our kids. And again, we're speaking the same language, and I'm just, I just want to kind of repeat, and I do respect your support and opinion, so thank you.
Counselor DeMambro?
Well, we were here a year ago, and I did say it, we gotta start working on the budget tomorrow for 2025. But we're here. We're at 14.53, and I struggle with it as well. And the reason I struggle with it is because, if anybody knows me by now, I do my homework. So I read all the line items, not only here, but in the big book. I've read each and every one of them. Went through 23 department heads in the last couple of days. We talked with every single one of them. I not only talk to them when we come to a city council meeting, I talk to them during the course of the year. Our fire department, our DPW, our police department, so on and so forth, inspectional services, engineering. Went through all of them. They run lean, and the services they provide are unbelievable, especially the fire and the police. They go by my house multiple times a day. If I had a dollar for every time they went by my house, could pay this budget in cash. They do a lot, but I struggle, because I go to the senior center and I see all the seniors there. I was there for the Memorial Day celebration they had, their ceremony. Place was full. But then I go to graduation ceremony last week, and I see all those vibrant faces walking across that field, so full of joy that they completed the task of getting their diploma, especially through these last few years with COVID and everything else, and the hell that those kids went through. And I can appreciate everything that your staff, your administrators, and your teachers did. That was a crazy time. We all got through it. For those kids to come through, I saw it last year, and I saw it again this year. As a matter of fact, I believe the principal said that their biggest struggle was dealing with COVID, and that will be their memory. So when it comes to a budget like this, I struggle, because it's not like I haven't done my homework on this. It's not like I haven't spoken to the mayor, or you, Mr. Lipsits, or you, Dr. Crowley, or Charlie, anyone that's involved in this. And even though you may not see me present, I watch the school committee meetings at home. Granted, it's with popcorn, but I do watch them. And I'm listening, and I listen to the teachers. I have friends that are teachers in the Woburn system. I listen to their stresses. I worked in the town of Lexington for 10 years in the school department facilities. I used to speak to teachers every single day, multiple, multiple teachers every day, principals. We were the custodians to the teachers, not so much for the buildings, but for the teachers. And you build a relationship with them, and you hear their struggles, especially after the bell rings and the kids go home. And I know that the teachers deal with emails at all hours of the night, and they want quick responses from the parents, and they deal with the students, with all of the struggles that the students go through, and issues and emotions. But again, this is something, being this budget has come in at 14.53, a historical amount that's never, never been in front of any one of our eyes before. I strongly recommend the WooStat. I think we should have started that and implemented that last year, but let's try to do it for maybe fiscal year 2026, starting tomorrow. I'm not sure how this is gonna pan out for a vote. I know I'm struggling with it, and I will struggle the next four days with this, because again, I see the seniors, and I see people that are barely making it with their fixed incomes from their pensions, some of which have been on them for 10 or 15 years. So they're limited. To President Dylan's point, his mother-in-law, 93... 93 years old, living in a home. How much longer? Most of the time, people worry about health. In this case, it could be financial reasons. I struggle with that. But again, I see the kids. And in today's economy, which is global, we need to give our students the best education they possibly can get. And even if they don't want it, you've got to pound it into them so they can stay competitive in the next 30, 40 years. Because that's our, that's our, that's our savior. They're our saviors. They're going to carry us. So I'm going to keep continuing to struggle with this. I appreciate everyone's hard work, especially the teachers, the administrators. I know what your struggles are. And I'm going to struggle with this. And I know my colleagues are too. So I appreciate all of the efforts, all of the hard work, because this doesn't happen overnight. But we are going to have to keep looking at it. And come Monday, we will vote. But I can say this. I'm struggling. Thank you.
Now just, if I could just respond to that. You know, the school committee has struggled with this budget as well. This is, I mean, as, as I said in my opening remarks, you know, this is not a budget that we wanted to present to you. This is not a budget that we were looking to bring forward. This is, in our estimation, the budget that our kids need. And those kids are going to walk across that same stage. And, and what I want them to walk across that stage with is, is, and, and what I want their parents in the stand to see is that they received, that they received the kind of education that we can be proud of. That they received an education that didn't, you know, we're not gold plating the doorknobs at the classrooms, right? We're not, we're not taking kids to school limousines. But that we can provide them with the same kinds of things that they can look, not even to Nate, not, I'm not talking about Lexington or Winchester, but that they can look to like communities and see. And so that's the balance that I also have to keep in mind, right? And I, you know, again, I feel like I know, you know, City Council President Dylan alluded to growing up in a, in a 1,300 square foot home, right? Mine's 1,400 square feet, right? It is not glamorous. My wife and I don't make a lot of money. We're going to feel this, right? We're going to, we're going to experience it. And I know that others will experience it more. I also know that, you know, and, and, and believe me, I, you know, I realize the, the impact of a year-to-year tax increase like the one we're looking at. But I also realize that, to, to Councilor Mr. Bruin's point earlier, Woburn has increased its taxes. But when you compare us essentially to anyone, I mean, and I mean anyone, on a year-to-year basis, that number is lower. I have done these comparisons. I have looked not just at tax rate. I have looked at impact on, on family households. I have looked at impact, you know, as compared to income. No matter how you slice this, we have fallen behind in our obligations to fund some of the basic things that we need to fund. Now, I can't speak to police or fire or DPW. And I know that those departments are also hurting. And I know that those departments also need increases. I don't see that as something that's against one another. I don't see an increase to the schools as something that hurts DPW or police or fire. What I see is that we need to make a choice to invest. And the reason why we are here with this budget now is in part because we haven't made that choice. And so, you know, this is not something that's within my power, obviously, right? But when I look at our school budget right now, what I see is not just the needs of now, but the needs of previous years coming to now. And that's what I want to preserve for the kids who walk across that stage, right? That's, that's what I want to make sure that they have access to is, is what we, what we owe them, right?
I, I just, I just want to just, not, my apologies for the injury. I just want people to understand, the residents, people watching, this is why we bring in the commercial that we try to bring in, the industry. It's to offset these costs. Yes, the traffic is, is a juggernaut sometimes. Yes, at 5 o'clock. We all have to face it. But that commercial base and that, those industries offset these types of costs. But it doesn't help when the state is pushing apartments upon us and housing and so on and so forth. So when those come in being forced, we have a increase in population, an increase in students and so on and so forth, that we all have to somehow develop some sort of a budget to cover all of it so we can give our residents and our constituents and our students and children the best that we can possibly provide them. And I have no doubt that you guys, everybody's trying their damnedest to do just that. It's, it's a very complex, very diverse community we have. And it's very, very important that that system is equally balanced. And we all pay attention to when there's a recession, there is, you know, high interest rates that cause these commercial businesses to evaporate. They disappear. The veil we were supposed to have in, in, in Ward 5, many commercial buildings that were going to go up. But because of the increased interest rates, they left. Davis Group down at the Showcase Cinemas, they left. They pulled out. CCF, they're subdividing lots and selling them off just to finance the projects that they do have. My point with all of that is we're trying desperately to, to offset the burden of costs from our residents. It just, it, I think one of my counselors said it. This is the perfect storm. And we're, we're in it. We're in the thick of it. So we're all going to have to come together and we're going to have to figure it out and get a number that works for everyone. And I mean everyone, including everyone that's watching us as we speak. And that's going to be the goal in the next four days. Thank you.
If I could just add one more thing. And, and I don't mean to come between you and that, and it's not regarding the same topic. I just wanted to come back because WUstat has been mentioned a few different times. And I know that Mrs. Chisholm would, would be very upset with me if I didn't mention, you know, the school department and the school committee works on a very different level, right? We, you know, WUstat is not exactly the system that we use. But the school committee is bound by law to be the, the manager of our budget. And we do so in public. We have public meetings on a regular basis where we do largely what I heard Mayor Concanon describing from WUstat. We go through our budget line by line. We look at overages. We adjust our budget asks based on that. We do it in public. Mrs. Chisholm's Finance and Personnel Committee meets bi-weekly to go through that. And believe, I've been on the Finance Subcommittee meeting. I have, I have been on the Finance Subcommittee meeting with Dr. John Wells. I have seen the level of, of small, like, so I have never seen anyone question sandwiches more than I have seen Dr. John Wells do it. These are the kinds of investigations into our spending that we do as a matter of course. And we do it in public, right? Not you can come to it, I can come to it, the mayor can come to it, my next door neighbor can come to it. Those are, those are public documents, right? So I hear the value in, in, in WUstat. And, and what I would just say to the, to the, what I don't want is, is for the public to leave with the impression that we don't do this. We do this. We do it regularly and we do it well.
My, my follow-up to that though is it's a tool in the drawer. And when you have budgets like this, we're going to use every tool we got in that cabinet. And if WUstat is needed so that we have another tool that we can utilize to try to nail this down so we're not doing this year after year, then, then that's something we seriously need to take a serious look at. I understand that we have the communication with the meetings and this and that that are televised and so on and so forth. But when it comes down to a software-type system that'll show you numbers and budgets and bars and graphs and pies, that's what we need. So that we don't come to a 14.53 that's going to affect everybody in this community, not just the people in this room, everyone. So if WUstat is a tool that we're not using, then we've got to get to using it. Because we're not going to leave any tool left untouched in the drawer and then expect the residents and the constituents to say, okay, well, city council said so, school committee said so. No. We want hard data that we can show them and say, this is what we've tracked over the last 12 months and that's how we got to this number. So I would suggest that we, we start using that tomorrow. Thank you.
Councilor Campbell.
Hi, welcome. Our budget over the past 10 years has been very lean. And you know, for the city hall, most of the departments have been level funded. And I know that's been very hard on them. And this year, finally, we have a little bit of a breath for, for the departments where they might be able to add a little bit of money here, a little bit there. And I'm very thankful for that. But what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing is that the mandates coming from the state, in my view, are crippling the school systems. And I'm extremely disappointed in this. I know someone had said early, let it, earlier, let it not be political. And I'm not meaning it to be, but it's obvious what it is. They're not even considering what the students are needed, what they need. And they're just putting these mandates on you. And they don't even, they're not understanding what the financial burden is for the school systems. And so once again, I'm very disappointed with that. The amount that you're asking yes is an exorbitant amount of money. But when I look at, you said 56.3% of our students are high-needs students for many different reasons. COVID, I think, was a big piece of it for a lot of the kids. We do have, what, 15% need help in English, speaking English and, and other things. What do the teachers do? They have a classroom where they have students that aren't speaking English. They have a couple students that have disabilities. And then you have the rest also there and they're all trying to learn. So how do we do that? How do we do that when we have the mandates coming down from the state telling them, first of all, what they can do, what they have to do, the guidelines they have to meet? We're really between a rock and a hard place. My hope is that, and I said this at an earlier meeting, I'm, my hope is that the city council can look into getting some sort of tax rebates, and I spoke quickly with the mayor about this, for our seniors to help them through this increase that might take place, the, the more vulnerable population that need help. I have spoken to a lot of people that really do, their paycheck to paycheck, with their property values going up, they're struggling very hard because their income isn't, isn't increasing. I also would like to look into, and I've spoke about this before, using some of our free cash to help offset this huge amount of the budget that you're asking, the 14%. I don't know if it's possible, excuse me. I don't know how much can even be used. I do realize that once we touch that, we're going to need it for next year. I understand that. But I also understand that by doing that, the taxes will not go up as much. That's going to be a burden, maybe from year to year. And honestly, I don't know quite the ramifications of how that works. And that will be something that hopefully the mayor and Charlie can help us with. That by doing that, maybe our, the taxes, the tax rate won't be so extravagant, so high for these individuals, the seniors and everybody across the board. So that's my hope, that we can find a way to fund it through funds that are already coming into the city, surplus funds that maybe we can use for this. And we call it a rainy day fund. Well, I think it's a rainy day if we have to increase between $600 and $800 per household on average. So we're talking 1,000. We're talking more than that for some individuals. I don't know what that is. I don't know how much we can take out and I don't even know if, if, if it's completely feasible. But I do know that our auditor knows and I do know that our mayor knows and hopefully we can work together to see what we can do about using some of those funds to help in this particular situation. Thank you.
Councilor Mr. Bruin.
I, I had something else to say, but I, I would like to, through the chair, to Councilor Campbell, that is so tempting to use the free cash. It really is. Because it would feel like some instant relief. But it is one of the worst ways to fiscally manage anything. And we must protect that AAA bond rating, especially now in this environment where we have the interest rates where they are. It's, I, I, believe me, you and I talked about it and I was actually thinking, yeah, maybe that's a way we can do it. But it's just not financially responsible. And I'm sure Charlie and Mayor Concanon will speak to that at some point on Monday. But, but thank you. Because we do need to think outside the box and I'm hoping the school will, will do the same. To Councilor Papalatto's point, we're not, we, the, the teachers and their salaries are contractual. I wouldn't expect that we would lose any of those folks. Nobody wants anyone to lose a job. We don't. But at the end of the day, yes, we have a responsibility to give the best education to our students that we can, that we can afford, that everyone can afford. And, and that's, that is our predicament, right? So Andrew, you said we have to invest. And you're right. You're absolutely right. We have to invest. But we can't invest everything at once. We can't jump off a cliff and, and say, I'm going to put all my money into Bitcoin. And I'm not saying the schools are, you, you understand what I'm saying, right? So everybody wants to invest. But if somebody came to you with an amazing opportunity, like the Woburn Schools is an amazing opportunity to invest in, you wouldn't give all of your pennies, right? Because you just can't. We can only do so much. So that's what this conversation is about. How do we get the best? How do we repair some of, some of the issues that have happened over the years, right? We're not going to repair all of them overnight. We, we just can't. The burden is too high. It, it's too high for most of the people that live in the city. So again, I, I can't thank you enough. I know this process has been so difficult for, for everyone. I'm a little disappointed to hear the response about WUstat though. That seems like a, seems like kind of something that everybody here would want to do. And I know you have your meetings, but I can tell you, I've heard from many people in this city, they have a hard time understanding the budget and understanding how money gets moved from one place to another. And, you know, I, I think it would be very helpful to our citizens if WUstat was on the table. But again, thank you again to everyone here tonight. And we'll see what happens, I guess, on Monday.
Councilor Elijah Farula.
I'll be real quick. Can I go to WUstat to stop Matt? WUstat's not a budget thing. Money isn't, money isn't the driving force behind WUstat. Money is very rarely talked about at the table at WUstat. It's these management scientists from University of Massachusetts that live in your world that go across districts and they have metrics and how other people do stuff. I was the first guinea pig that had to go to WUstat day one with Sarah Stanton and Mayor Galvin. And ultimately, I grew into it for seven years. I, I got WUstat. It's not a money thing. Money is secondary to WUstat. It's not a money thing. Money is secondary to WUSTAT. It's pretty cool with efficiency and taught us stuff like that. So I love WUSTAT. That's beside the point. I learned over the last few days, a few things, and Andrew and I talked a lot. One thing, and I didn't work with a lot of your administrative staff, they knew since I left. But I learned over the last week that Maureen Ryan, in her profession, is so well-respected from special needs people. And I mean, I was at a graduation party where there are two people that are out district placement, and I'll be very careful with my words, the parents, the child, the other child was nonverbal. It was the whole thing. But I just learned so much of the respect that Maureen, and I don't know Maureen Ryan. I mean, I just know that the respect that she has from the thing, I thank you for that. I'm scared to death of the numbers. I'm scared to death of the money. I share all of their sentiment of the concern going forward, but I just want to compliment you with that. Second compliment coming. I spend a lot of time in the school still. I read Across America. I donated some money to field days and field trips over the last couple of weeks. The teachers that deal with, I guess I can call them migrant children that are in the school system. These kids are polite. They come into school clean, ready, fired up, and ready to go. Great for walking them into the community. I have a money question. If they move from our community to get established in another community, are we obligated to transport back for education, or do they move on to the other community?
That's a good question.
Sometimes I have good questions.
Every now and again.
Not very frequently.
Not very frequently. To answer your question, if, if, we did have this happen. Mr. Farullo, I was going to call you chief, but so we did have this happen around the holiday season, where we had, I believe it was 12 families that were in the Comfort Inn on Montvale, moved, and they moved to Danvers, to a Comfort Inn in Danvers. This is the state just moving, I mean, this happens all the time. They had the right to keep attending school in Woburn, and we would have split the cost of the transportation with Danvers because they have a stay-put right to stay in the school of their origin. And so, one of the things that is in the budget, we talked about a little bit tonight, is our homeless transportation is about $450,000. We transport kids from all over the state virtually here because they started here and may live in Boston now. We have, I believe, as far west as Worcester. So they have that right, and these students would also have that right. They also, in this case, all 12 families decided to enroll in the Danvers Public Schools for the reasons that make sense. So if a student is sick, they don't have to figure out a way to get to Woburn from Danvers. So they, and it allows them to become part of the, the community.
How long does, if you don't mind me asking, how long does that? Can they come back next year too, I guess is the question. Do you own them for 12 years?
Once they enroll in another district, they are, they are.
No, but the people that left and choose to come back, can they come back in perpetuity until they graduate? So if I go up to Danvers and I choose to come back to Woburn Schools, you have to transport me. How long is that right to come back last?
If you enroll in the Danvers Public Schools, you can't come back.
No, no, if you're here, you're Woburn, I moved to Danvers, I choose to come back to Woburn.
Oh, indefinite.
So they could graduate from Woburn High even though they're in kindergarten now? And you have to drive them back?
I'm here in, did Maureen say?
Yeah, it's homeless designation.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's McKinney-Vento. It's a law. And so, it's a federal law. So as long as they're designated as homeless, they have that right.
And then, one last thing, all the pomp and circumstance, I'm very concerned about next year because public safety is taking a hit, and Andrew said the relationship really isn't there. The bucket's only so big, and you guys are taking the majority of the bucket. But there's other people that are, you know, there. I'm real worried if this comes back next year, that it's going to put us in a predicament. And all positive, I love what you do. You and I have been together for a long time. But it's just that I really worry about what steps we can take toward next year, toward managing this on a month-to-month basis. I'm on the team. I'm just really scared to death of the money. But thank you for all you do. And Maureen, I don't mean to embarrass you, but thank you.
And I, could I just quickly answer that? I, we're scared to death of the money, too. I think we're scared to death of what's, what happens if the money's not there. And what that does to our staff, what that does to our kids. Because, again, you know, I, and I've heard from, from all the counselors on, on this. But we don't, there is not hidden savings in this budget. It's not there. We would have to dig deep, and I worry about what that would wind up meaning. And so I, I hear you. I hear everyone. This is like, this, I don't, I wouldn't want to sit in your chair. I don't want to sit in my chair, but I wouldn't want to sit in your chair. There's no easy answer here. There's no, I don't, you know, this is one of those situations that is going to keep everyone up at night. But I want to make sure that we know that reducing this budget is not going to be easy. And it's not going to be easy on anyone, and it's not going to be easy on our staff, and it's not going to be easy on our kids. And so I just want to make sure that that's, that that's clear, too.
I mean, if you look up in Lewes Ward, the growth at the end of Commerce Way, that's headed your way. I mean, the huge growth up there with apartments. But it's also heading Chief Ruffo's way, and Chief Kenton's way, and DPW's way. And the Police Department is virtually the same size as it was on May 18, 1980, when I was sworn in. And, I mean, it's one or two off, but it's really the same. And I'm a whole supporter of you guys, and the numbers up there in the thousands, Dylan, you can probably correct me, 2,000?
2,000.
2,000, the apartments, I'm sorry, through the, through the chair, for the MBTA 3A community?
No, no, what's under construction up there now on both sides of the train tracks?
1,500, approximately?
Right, right now, you have 250 online to be built at Zero New Boston Street, 425 at Fairfield on New Boston Street to the end of New Boston Street.
So those are all headed your way?
And Emblem's already up and running.
And Emblem's up and running at three something.
I'm done. Thank you, guys.
President Dillon?
Yes, I just want to thank Counselor Campbell for, again, thinking outside the box about the free cash. But I do hesitate to think of that option based on our bond rating. From myself checking into it, I understand that's how we're able to borrow money at a lesser interest rate. And as an example, water treatment plant down at the pond we're doing for 21 or 22 million. If my memory serves me correct, the amount is like a 4% interest. And that's because we had the triple rated bond rating. If I said six years ago, anything about PFAS, everyone would look at me and say, Dillon lost it again. So that's truly, not that this is anything, I don't want to discount what we're dealing with here, but that's what that rainy day fund is truly for. So we're able to borrow for these unforeseen important issues. Nothing more important than drinking water. So just to explain how I understand it works. But thank you for looking at every option, and that's what we're here to do. And I know we all wish we had a magic wand, but I don't see one right now. Thank you.
Counselor Demanborough?
Just to expand on all the, Counselor Farullo said, that population up in my ward, Ward 6, we all know is growing with apartments, so on and so forth. And with the housing plan that's coming down, that I just read in the paper, 6.8 million. There is also a Community Housing Act which will enable people to take a single-family home and turn it into a two-family home with accessory dwelling. So your population's going to go up in the next few years. And it's, again, state mandates. And the reason why I'm bringing this up, and it's not to muddy the waters, but it kind of, it's hitched to this. Maybe not today, but it will be in the very near future. We still have to look at the Alta Vesta School, the Linskett School, and the dilemma that's been going on over there for the last 25, 30 years. The residents up in North Woburn wanted a new school. They've been saying it year after year after year. We know what those schools are. I'm on the school building planning committee up toward these schools. That school's in far worse shape than when I was even there, and it was in tough shape when I went there, and that's back in, well, 1977 or so. As well as the Kennedy, as well as the Joyce. I just want everybody to be aware not to lose sight of that, because at some point, we're going to have to, we're going to have to wrangle with those two grizzly bears, too. And those are, those are big numbers. So even more of a reason why we have to, we as vigilant as we possibly can be when it comes to these budgets, because I've sat in those meetings and planning. And with the MSBA and how to finance this, that, and the other thing, and how to go about it. There was conversation of shifting some of that burden to the taxpayers. We have to keep that in mind. And I don't want to muddy the waters on this particular budget. But this is also hitched to this budget, and it may not be this exact one, but something tells me it's coming next year. And we're going to have to wrestle with that. And I don't know how we're financing this this year, and then we have to wrestle with that matter come next year on top of whatever your percentage is. And this is why I say, we have to start thinking about not only this, but next year's as well, starting immediately. Because it's never going to stop, and if we're not diligent with these budgets, it's unsustainable, and we all know that. It'll be unsustainable for our taxpayers. And I want everybody to keep that in mind. Thank you.
I could just quickly, and I appreciate those pressures, and I appreciate you looking forward, too. I mean, this, the building projects that we are looking at are necessary, and they will be expensive, and you know that as well or better than anyone. I do want to say a couple of quick things. And again, you know, I, you know this, and I know this. I want to make sure the public is aware. The budget that we have in front of you is the result of a diligent process. This is the result of, as we've said, gathering input from our teachers, from our staff, from our building principals, trying to understand the needs that we have, and then making very, very hard choices to bring that down to the level that we think is, is as low as it can go before we start really damaging things, right? And so that diligence is, happens before this budget ever comes to you. And that diligence happened in, you know, in meetings with Finance Subcommittee and in meetings with the School Committee. And, you know, we have explained how that works and have gone through this with the mayor. And so we have spent a lot of time on this budget, and we have looked at it hard, and we have looked at it from a lot of angles. And I know that you know that. I just wanted to make sure that the public is clear, that this is not just sort of what we woke up this morning and dropped on your table.
I understand.
And I also just want to point out, as we talk about looking forward, you're right. I think we are going to see some increase in population in North Woburn. And I think if we are going to adequately meet the needs of the kids who are going to come in to North Woburn and to any other area of the city where we're seeing expansion, the worst thing we can do is take a step back now. Because we will just have to build back those supports later.
Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, just, just one quick comment on the free cash. Thank you, Counselor Dillon. President Dillon, sorry. I do understand that the, if we used some of the money from free cash, that it affects our bond rating. I'm not saying to fund the whole school budget, the, the increase, the increase of. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about 3 million, 4 million, something in some surplus that we could use. We, when I started on the council, we were probably maybe at $20 million in free cash, and it's gone up year after year after year. We're, we're over $40 million. I understand we need that to keep our bond rating where it is, and I understand that, that it will help us with capital purchases and keeping the percentage of the different projects that we do down. But I also believe that we're, that increase is coming because of the real estate boom that has taken place in Woburn, where our homes at one point were 500,000. Now they're up to 800,000. That extra fees, that extra amount is coming into our coffers, is coming into the city. And I did speak to Charlie about this. And I believe, I don't know what the amount is, but in my mind, there is a way to use 3 or 4 million dollars or something. I don't know what the amount is, but enough to take the edge off of the amount that we would end up using to then tax the residents of Woburn. I would think that would really help. Once again, I'm not sure. I'm going to keep looking into it. But I just want to make it clear, of course, I understand what it means about the bond rating and all of that. But yeah, thank you.
Any other counselors have any comments? Seeing none? All right. I guess I'll speak. As the other counselors have said, I'm very concerned with this budget. It's the highest anybody's ever seen. We're in different times right now, coming out of COVID, post-COVID. The high needs of the school system is incredibly high, 56.3%. That's the most vulnerable population that we have, them, as well as our senior citizens. I mean, they're going to take a hit when it comes to this budget, if it goes through as, as it is. We need to provide the best education possible that's affordable for all residents. And as I said, we need to, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but we need to worry about our most vulnerable populations. That's, other issues that I bring up is the facilities. Facilities might be a good time to start a conversation between the city side and school department side, trying to bring it over to the city side. I know it was previously brought up, short, small amount, but might be a good way to take it off the school's budget, transfer it over to the city. I know you'd be trying, you'd be giving up power, but you'd still, you're tasked with teaching the children, not worrying about the schools day-to-day. You wouldn't have to worry about that. We would have somebody else doing that. WUSTAT, that's another issue. That definitely would be a great idea if we could implement that into the school system. And just so residents at home know, that it roughly equates to, for every 45, $45 for every $1,000 that else is evaluated to. That's what it would come out to roughly, what you would be paying more in your taxes. So as it was said, the average tax bill would go up between 6 to 800%, 6 to $800. And then I also want to urge the residents, if you have comments, concerns, please come out to a meeting Monday night. It is a public hearing. So your voice will be heard, and I'm going to keep an open mind going forward. With that, any other counselors' comments, questions? I want to take a motion, actually, before I entertain a motion.
I think Dr. Crowley has.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Crowley.
Yeah, I just, first of all, I don't think I've stood this long in one place in quite a while. Thank you for your time tonight. I started by saying that. I mean it. I also want to let you know that when Mayor Concanon was sworn in in January, one of the first things we started doing was Tuesday mornings, going to the schools and walking through the schools and into classrooms and so forth. And one of the things that he kept saying to me, and I don't, it's not private, I hope, but is, I wish everybody saw what I see. And I think what he means by that, and again, not to put words in his mouth, but the needs of our kids are real. Our teachers are amazing, but they need support. And his support of our budget tonight tells me that the meetings that we've had were effective. Because one of the things that I've learned in these meetings is that the mayor does not, is very aware of the impact of this increase on the taxpayers. And so I'd like to believe that our relationship since January has led us to this point. And I appreciate that partnership. As it relates to WUSTAT, so I actually asked a couple of the superintendents, have you, you ever heard of WUSTAT? And they said, no. But little did I know, it's, it's, it's some others.
It's not really called, I'm sorry.
It's ComStat.
It's, it's not really called WUSTAT. Charlie, what's the real name? It's not really called WUSTAT. Charlie, what's the real name?
ComStat.
We just, we named it. We named it WUSTAT because it's in the W.
Right, so welcome to Woburn, right?
Quality Woburn branding, right?
Yeah, so. We made him use orange change.
So, and, and, Mr. Ferullo, I believe you, if you tell me it's not fiscal, I'm open-minded if there's a way.
It's not fiscal, there's not, I mean.
If there's a way to do things more efficiently and better, I'm all, I'm interested in learning. And so I would, I would say that here tonight publicly. A few years ago, there was a, we used the system, ClearGov was the name of it, to try to be transparent with budgeting. I'm not sure what happened exactly, but it.
It stunk.
Is that a technical term, Joe?
It stunk.
So, so I share that because I do believe in transparency with the public. You know, people, and I hear the concern about the marginalized folks in Woburn who may be impacted. And so again, am appreciative of everyone's time. I do hope that you support the budget where it is. I think it's the right thing for the students in the, in the city whom my number one responsible is for their education, and so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. And I echo that as well.
Before I entertain a motion, I just want to thank those that are in the audience. Superintendent Crowley, Assistant Superintendent Young and Ryan, Director of Finance, Dizio, Chair Lipsit, and members of the School Committee, Austin, Wetzel, Chisholm, and Cormier. And then also some of our principals from the schools as well. So thank you all for attending.
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we stand adjourned.
Thank you all.